We can get going, or do we are waiting for someone like Jeff or somebody?
No, I just sent Jeff a note, asked him about Michael and just said Marie had logged us on, so.
Okay.
Do we um, do we need to have the STR chapter open in front of us for this portion?
Yeah.
I gotta open the meeting first and we can get into that. We we should, yes. Anyway, uh, welcome everybody to our Zoom meeting. Uh, it was a workshop, uh, totally, uh, dedicated to code update review. So, uh, we'll be getting into that. Everyone's more than welcome to, uh, to, uh, watch. We won't be taking any public comments, uh, tonight. Uh, ample time to, uh, take a look at the code once we have it finished and reviewed and goes to public hearing. Uh, that said, uh, we will, uh, start, uh, first with short-term rentals, um, and, uh, we can go from there. One is a question I know Kathleen has on planning board and whether we should just, can, I think we can set something in if they do or don't respond, let's move, let's move. But go ahead.
I I I would prefer to wait for them to weigh in since they may have substantive comments.
Have they given us an indication that they will be giving us a response and when?
Yes, yes. In fact, I forwarded, um, a week or two ago, the preliminary response.
Right.
That's what made me raise the question because it seemed like they were going in the direction of having some substantive comment.
And they said they would meet this week, Marie, or next week?
Next week.
And that's fine with our timelines?
Yes, and 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 let me, um, explain why I think that's fine with our timelines. The, the currently, if we were to approve today and go forward, the, um, public hearing would occur on the 18th. Now, what I propose, we do. Now, rather than waiting for anyone else to comment, is to put out a public announcement from the village board of trustees that says essentially that the village board is considering changing the regulations uh, for properties that host STRs. And that the village board recommends that STR property owners, um, evaluate their, uh, their 2021, uh, uh, reservations, which will not be affected by the new regulations, but the new regulations will likely go into effect by on January 1st, 2022. So property owners will be required to conform to those regulations once they are passed into law. So property owners may want to consider how or when or if they book for 2022. Now, that's just stream of consciousness off my head, but it 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 puts a line in the sand. It tells people, 2021, you can do what you want, we're not going to prosecute. But in 2022, there are going to be new regulations that you will have to adhere to. So give that serious consideration if you start booking for 2022.
I think that makes sense, so, and, um, this way, you know, we we should, if we hear from the planning board by next week, we should be able to have this public hearing probably by the end of the month.
Yes, yes.
Well, if all goes well. Oh, by the way, excuse me, Jeff said he forgot to tell us that Michael has a ZBA tonight.
Okay.
Forgot there was ZBA tonight.
So you're Michael, Marie?
Yeah, got it.
Um, that makes sense to me, and I I like, I like the idea of the additional buffer.
So, Dave, with with your, with your agreement, I'll draft something to send to John. I will obviously copy everyone on that. Uh, asking John whether or not this is something that we can do, if he would recommend that the wording be changed. Because you'll remember in his letter, it was on February 21st, he talks about, um, notice being given based out periods, et cetera, and this would would do that.
Yep. I think he suggested this a long time ago.
Yeah. It sounds good.
Hey, Marie?
Yes.
I want to make sure. I saw that Jean C. Sun came on the call. I want to make sure that you're looking for us and not the ZBA, Jean.
I wanted to listen in on whatever fence update was about to happen. Is that the?
Oh, okay. Great. You're in the right, oh, well, for for fence code, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, you're in the right spot then.
Okay.
Okay, we need to.
Bye. Nice to hear from you.
Okay, so we need to, there she goes. Okay, perfect.
Together a letter. Now, um, I did get feedback from Charlotte on the, interestingly, the verification phase. And as you will note in my comments, she is recommending that the verification phase be three weeks in length. So, um, I I we will have to change the schedule based upon her input. I would recommend that what we do is, instead of starting the verification phase, I think we said November 1st, that we move that out to, move that up to October 15th, which would require moving the application acceptance period to the end of September. Uh, so with your agreement, I will go through and modify the dates in the STR draft to reflect Charlotte's, uh, recommendations, and the dates would be moved up earlier in the year.
Is, um, is September, would you say September 1st for applications, Marie?
I believe that that's, September 1st to September 15th is what I remember, Fran. I'm just scrolling through now.
Yeah, John suggested, um, uh, move the publication date, applications due in August and the law and the lottery and permits issued by the end of September.
Which we can't do that.
Which would make, which would make sense.
But we, but we can't do that. It it takes, well, uh, so what he said was that, um, the applications do in August. Um, applications do in August, takes three weeks for the applications to be verified. We then need the lottery, and then we need at least six weeks for the, um, inspections. So it's going to take us, it's going to take us more time than that.
Okay, so the permits wouldn't be issued in September, but maybe, uh.
Right. So what the the question I have about John is what we have in the law is what will be followed every year versus what will we do the first year? So I'll follow up with him on that, um, because.
Why would, if we're putting it off till next year, why would that be different?
So in September 2022, sorry, yes, in in right now, the the recommendation is that permits, uh, I'm trying to find it.
On page, uh.
The month of October is devoted to, is identified as when people can submit their applications. So we we allow right now one month for application submission. And prior to that, we have stated that we will advertise two weeks prior to applications being accepted. It's right, so our, our, in the, in the law, as it's currently written, we start off September 15th, um, that, let's see, I will advertise in the paper record for STR permit applications, notably later than seven, September 15th of each calendar year. Then applications will be accepted from October 1st to October 31st of each calendar year. And then we have currently a two-week period for verifications, which needs to be changed to three weeks. And then a six-week period for inspections, which can stay the same. Uh, and then the lottery itself. So the 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 question in my mind is, right now, can we implement something for publication, acceptance of applications, different in 2021 or for permits that will be issued effective January 1st, 2022? Or do, does the law have to state what we're going to do in both 2021 and 2022 and beyond?
Why don't we, I mean, I know I'm not answering for John, but why don't we just adjust it so that it makes sense for everything, rather than having a different, I mean, we have plenty of time this year if we're not going to do a lottery this year, we're not going to do permits this year. So if we move everything.
We are going to do a lottery this year.
Well, we are, but for for, uh, next year. And it's, you know, it's it's different from what we were originally thinking. So if we move everything like ahead a month, so so instead of September 15th, it'll be August 15th, instead of October 1st to 31st, it would be September and so on. Does that give us, and then extend Charlotte's three, two weeks to three weeks? Does that fit okay?
Yes.
For every year, and then just for every year, we'll just leave it?
Uh, yeah, the question is, i- in my mind, are people in a position in the, whatever the date is, August timeframe, to submit applications for the following year?
The the application from working, working back to issuing of actually permits um, and the inspection needed, and, uh, in the application process uh, and lottery, how many weeks is that total?
Um, three, three, six, um, 10, uh, 11, 12, 12, off the top of my head, 12 weeks from when we publish that we will accept um, applications, and then there's a two-week dormant period where nothing happens. And then we begin accepting and verifying. And then we be, we 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 begin accepting for a one-month period. We do a three-week verification, uh, a six-week inspection. Uh, and there's got to be a time in the, in between where the lottery occurs. We'll probably need to have a date in there.
So Marie, what are you worried about? What what's your concern about whether people would be ready in August?
Will people be ready in August to make an application for 2023? Right.
I would think they should be.
And but what would you advocate differently?
I'm not advocating differently. I'm asking the question.
I I was just trying to understand if you would, if you are concerned that it needs to be earlier or later?
No, earlier, I don't think. Later might be reasonable.
I would think in August, they should be ready because they start advertising for whatever, I mean, I don't know, you know, and and we may put in August, and and the people who do this, when they come to the public hearing, may want to change, but I would go with the August. Um, because I think that gives us a little bit of breathing space, and it's not saying, well, you know, you're not going to know until the end of November whether or not you can actually advertise for the following year. People may want to advertise for the winter season. I don't know why, but maybe, you know.
That's, I think that's right, Fran.
So Fran, if if you look at the application procedure 100 dash four.
Right.
Um, would you recommend that the September 15th become July 15?
No, I would recommend August 15th.
Okay.
And just, and then just go from October 1st, make the application accepted September 1 to September 30th. Um, and just push everything until we get to the point where Charlotte, um, says she needs an extra week and then just.
Okay. I'll make those change, I'll make those changes.
I'm good with those if everyone else is. I I think people, I would think if I was going to decide that I'm going to do this, that I would get my act together by August of, you know. I don't know. I've never done it before. I have no intention of doing it, but that would be my call.
So and we're also, if we're advertising well, which is what to, which was Dave's original point, you know, sort of from the beginning, if we're giving people enough time and enough notice, they should be ready when they're ready. I mean, they're ready when we're ready to roll.
So here, but here, here's, independent of this discussion, uh, we would essentially be telling people in the December timeframe of 2022 that they will be receiving a permit for 2023. So the question is, is that sufficient time for STR owners to start booking for January 1st? Uh, uh, President's Weekend, Martin Luther King Weekend, it it is that sufficient time? Or should we move everything up earlier?
I would move everything up earlier because I don't, first of all, when we run into, no offense or anything, once we hit the middle of November, train a rush in permits and inspections and everything else in the middle of the holiday season just is not going to work. I think we should be, we should aim to be done before that, so people know, and so we're not going crazy in Charlotte and everybody else going crazy over the holidays.
Okay, so how about instead of moving from September 15th to August 15th, move September 15th to July 15th?
That that works for me. I mean, I I don't know, as I say, I've never done this, so I don't know.
I didn't, I didn't understand where you were going with this initially, Marie, but once you framed out the early, early in the year holidays, I I've got what you're saying, and yes, back.
Yeah, I, uh, you know, I I I don't have an STR rental. But I would think that if that was going to be a significant source of income to me, that I would want to be booking people as quickly as possible. Uh, and the more time that I know that I'm going to get that permit for the next calendar year, the 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 more confidence I have that my STR will get booked to the level that that I I need.
Got it.
So we're good. Shall we ask Jeff to redo the resolution for next week's meeting?
I I don't think we have, uh, this meeting next Thursday. I think next Thursday's.
Budget meeting. And we we don't, we have a meeting on the 16th, um, we do.
Budget workshop, enough, the 16th, yes, is in the public meeting for the police plan review.
If this is ready, I guess we can do a fast approval of a resolution on the 16th.
We're not going to hear back from, we're not going to be here. Well, when when would we set the, if we set it that day, when would it be? And is that enough time to look at what planning is going to send us?
Uh, the the plant, if my understanding is correct, planning next meets next Thursday.
Next Thursday, right.
The 11th. So we should have a response from planning by, uh, Monday of next week, uh, which would be the 15th. I think it's the 15th. So we should be in a position by Thursday of next week to have had their response and have had a chance to consider it and have an opportunity to discuss it.
Do we want to, um, approve the resolution on the 23rd and then just make the public hearing in April?
I don't see a problem with moving the public hearing to April.
We still have plenty of time. I mean, I think that gives us a little bit of wiggle.
You okay with that, Dave?
I'm fine with it, Jeff.
So tentatively, we'll have the, the resolution approved on the 23rd for public hearing sometime in April, and I I Marie, you're better at figuring those dates than I am.
And that also gives us a cushion in case there is anything that that we want to respond to from the planning board that gives a little bit of cushion.
Uh, well, well, we have to do, we have to do that prior to the 20.
Before it's made available, yeah.
Right, yeah.
But it, as opposed to being on the 18th, I mean.
Right.
Okay.
Yay. I'm going to close short-term rentals.
Concerns, maybe we should send to Matt, not concerns, the concerns that Matt had, and I think, uh, you know, we should, you know, maybe I'll send them something quickly, just that we are going to, you know, phase this in. I think that was one of his concerns of of, uh, you know, the timing on it. So I think that, you know, that was one of his concerns. So maybe there's a few things we can kind of nip in the bud a bit.
Yeah, the second, the second concern that he had, and this is a pervasive concern with laws in general, is that laws should be able to articulate a predictable outcome. And having a lottery does not provide any predictable outcome. You'll find that in his, uh, letter.
But, yeah, no, I understand what he's saying with that, but is is, well, first, it's like, I don't know, I I I guess we could call some other villages. I don't know how they do it, but if you go by first come, first serve, or whoever else you would do it, there's no predictable outcome on that either.
Yeah, and he recognizes in his letter that he doesn't have an alternative to suggest.
Right.
And in in John's email on the 21st, he specifically talks about lottery, so.
Yes, John, John is, John is it, is okay on the lottery. On this letter, right?
Okay, I wish it was the way that you could have, whatever, uh, be able to lock people in, but I don't know how you would do that. I don't know how that would be fair to anybody. I mean, if it's first come, first served, how do you do that? And, you know, it's like people emailing in, or you'd have to line up and fight down at the village hall in the morning.
It would be, it would be like getting a vaccine appointment.
Yes.
Maybe less, a little less painful, just a little.
Okay.
People will take a day off and work to be online, and then they'll yell at us.
No one will have to drive to Potsdam.
No, one other, one other thing for you to note in chapter, in the, uh, in chapter 100 is I went through and identified the, um, the boundary lines uh, for each street where a street is being chopped, chopped up into blocks. And Fran has techno, technically gone, her technical skills allowed her to put in a second entry for Constitution Drive and a second entry for Chestnut Street. Uh, so you'll, you'll see both of those. So now we have, as it turns out, two streets that have two permits. One is Constitution Drive and the other is Mountain Avenue. We always had two on, don't we have two on Mountain Avenue? The top of.
Yes.
Yeah, and the, and the, right.
We always had two of Constitution.
Yeah.
It wasn't divided that way.
Right. And and now that each, each section has one only, but for whatever reason, when we were discussing things last time, the only one that was in my mind about having two was Constitution, when in fact, uh, Mo- Mountain has, um, two, and Main Street has four or five, or something like.
Parrot has parrot and parsonage of two.
You're right, you're right. It it's the way they were divided up. I wasn't counting them.
Right, okay.
It's good.
And Marie, while we're at it, thank you so much for getting the, uh, environmental assessment form done.
Oh, you're welcome.
All on our own, so we didn't have to pay Ted Fink to do it.
Or 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 John first.
Or John first.
Yes.
For that matter, thank you.
You will see in John.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Kathleen.
Um, yes, thank you for doing it. I had one question, which was under C to B. Um, with any local or regional special planning district, should we not have the historic district there?
It's not a planning district.
What do you mean it's not a planning district?
HDRB is not a planning, uh, planning board.
Correct, but it is, it is, it is within our code as an identified district, and these are uh, Greenway designated special. All right, I understand.
Okay. Um, John noted in his, um, January 21st letter that each member of the village board uh, must, um, let's see. All village board members should go through the questions. Since this is coming from the village board, my expectation that is that the five members of the village board will read through the questions so that they're ready to sign off on the leaf when it's, when it's time to do so.
I actually, real, I found the other two that I, the other two questions that I had. Um, it's on the back sheet that has the text under additional information.
Mm-hmm.
Um, under brief, brief description, in the very last sentence, to accomplish this, the village proposes to amend the code. Yep.
Did you put that, did you put that in the Google Drive?
I didn't, because I read it from, I forgot that you had put it on the, put it on the Google Drive, and Jeff sent it to me via email, and I read it that way. I read it that way.
Okay, could you make that a change to the, um, uh, to the Google Drive?
Me? Yes, sure.
Thank you, as as a suggestion.
Sure. And then the other was in the next paragraph, this is a question, because I'm, I can't remember how it's framed exactly in the comprehensive plan, and I didn't have time to go through and look today, but the next paragraph says, "The village comprehensive plan adopted by the Board of Trustees in January, on January 10th, 2012, includes policy statements related to creating more visitor accommodations within the village. Is it appropriate from there to say, and protecting the residential character of the village?" Would that be an accurate reference to the comp plan?
Um, let me see. Can you put that in as a comment?
Absolutely. I'm going to do it right now, so I don't forget.
Thank you. I'd have to go back to the, uh, leaf to see what that section, that, um, attachment is referring to, to see whether or not it's appropriate.
So it's a PDF online?
No, it's Google Docs.
My, um, I'm seeing it as a PDF. Here is a, oh, volume two. Here it is as a Word doc. Okay. I'll go in and do it now, so it's.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Okay, shall we?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Marie.
No, no, I, I'm finished with 100.
Shall we look at fences?
Sure.
Chapter 42 fences. I breezed through this today because I didn't breeze through much. Um, the only thing, let me just go through fast again, um, a couple of minor comments. First of all, the, uh, the drawing, which I know Kathleen said, um, Lloyd was doing for us, poor Lloyd, we we appreciate what he's doing for us.
He said he'll have it, he'll have it by Monday.
Don't make him go.
He was traveling for work, but he'll have it by Monday.
Um, second things were on page by the images. On page, um, four, Kathleen was saying, can we get rid of the trapped white space between the street and the sidewalk? I don't know how to do that, so that's, that's beyond me. I think that's a Dave picture.
I'll, I'll take a look. May, is it something I did or when you transferred?
Um, I have to, I'd have to go back and look at your original picture and then have to remember how I got it.
I I definitely didn't have it there, but maybe it got moved over. I'll take a look at the image.
Okay, I.
I think it was, I think it happened in the translation.
I apologize. Sorry about that. Is it just an image two or is it in both of them? It's just an.
Just an image two. And is it, did we conclude that the way we have the, um, outline around the rear yard, Dave, that the, the color, the color of the right side of the rear yard is correct, that light blue?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, yeah, because it's the corner. Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know why that blue line should be darker too, somehow. I mean, not darker, it's really thin, goes.
Thicker, yeah. If you want to redo the picture, then I will try to remember how I got it in here.
I'll, I'll send it, I'll send you another one, you can.
Sorry. All right, when you do, just give me a heads up, so I will.
Okay, we'll do.
We try to work on it this weekend. Okay, um, on page right below the image number two, Kathleen added, um, in the, in H, the height of the deer fencing shall not exceed eight feet. Deer fencing may be installed inside and rear yards and must conform to, um, Kathleen added all other portions of 423F. Um, or it would originally said must conform to 423F. Um, so we added all of the portions.
Gee. I don't understand what all other portions means.
Um, I can't remember how it was, it, oh, it must had conform, must conform to 423F. And that, that is only, that is only rear yard. Is that what we meant?
423F is street intersections.
Oh, that's G. Sorry, you're right. Never mind. Take it out.
Take it out. It works for me. Um.
Sorry about that.
That will, how do we, okay, so, um.
Reject.
I can't, why can't I reject, Marie? Did somebody take away my ability to reject?
I didn't, but I'll, I'll reject it for you.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, the next one now, walls must conform with chapter 106, deep slopes, and Kathleen's saying, do fences have to conform to 106?
I haven't read 106 yet. Why are fences not in 106?
Because, well, 106 deals with steep slopes, and a key element in steep slopes is retaining walls. Fences are not an element in steep slopes.
Got it. Okay. I have to read that one still. All right, reject.
Okay, Marie, I'm going to leave you to reject that one also. Uh, okay, I think, I think that was.
Thinking about, I was thinking about this, like, the the fence that's installed and on Market Street on that rocky slope, but I guess that's not quite the degree that you're thinking about with that chapter.
Chapter, it turns out steep slopes is a new, is a new chapter, so whatever they did, they did.
In 42, five penalties, Kathleen was like, what's the difference between a firm and a corporation? I I gave you some quotes, a company is called a firm when it is a partnership of two or more persons, and a firm is not a separate legal entity, according to what I could find, and it cannot enter into contracts. So a corporation definitely can, so, uh, any person, firm or corporation committing an offense. So a firm could be a business, um, but. So a firm could be a business, um, but not necessarily, uh.
So it would cover, that would cover a, a business. Firm would, firm would, is broad enough to cover business.
I would say.
Like a commercial business. Okay.
We good with that? Am I good, everybody? Okay, so the other thing pending on fences then is the drawing and the new drawing.
Okay, great.
And I think, I think fences is good to go. Okay, so chapter forty. The corrected. Sorry, give me a second to scribble.
Um, I'm, I'm getting a message that Henry needs to be somewhere. Um, I just need to make sure that John's available to take him. I'm gonna hop out for a second. I'm sorry.
We'll, we'll wait, Kathleen. Go ahead.
This is the big challenge of.
And the next thing is, um, we just need to correct the picture on image two. So that takes care of chapter forty. Um, forty is pretty much done. Then we can lock that up.
You don't mean forty. You mean, you mean forty-two.
Forty-two, thank you.
Yeah.
So once we get those two images in, I can lock it up. We're done with it?
I think so.
What'd you do? Push him out the door, Kathleen?
I just said, go figure it out. Find daddy.
Bias. Okay, so, so other than those two pictures and then fences done. Um, what's the next thing I show here? This one's done. Um, chapter thirty-six. Okay, thirty-six. Now we have a whole bunch of versions on thirty-six here.
Uh, okay, so not forty next?
I'm sorry. Okay, that's why I'm looking at forty. Sorry. I knew there was a forty in my mind someplace. I apologize.
It seems like we're still waiting on a chunk of stuff from Charlotte on this one, right?
Well, we've gotten some response.
Some.
Yep.
Do we want to look at it or do we want to, uh?
Yeah, let's, let's.
Let's try to get some of these results.
Okay.
If, if you don't mind. So the first one would be on page five B.
Right. Okay, um, so page five B, the officer shall be appointed by evolution of the Board of Trustees, a code enforcement officer shall possess background experience related to building construction and knowledge of the New York State Fire Code. Um, so Heidi's comment, um, building construction seemed essential, not sure of use of, okay. So, um, so, so we'll leave that according to, uh, instead of saying needs experience related to building construction or fire presentation, it's and knowledge of the fire code. So that's a good catch on Heidi's part.
And, uh, that comes from the, uh, New York State, uh, manual of requirements for, requirements and training for code enforcement officers and the Putnam County, uh, requirements for code enforcement officers.
Good job.
Fran, I, I sent that image Fran, so whenever you want to take a look.
Okay, I will put myself a sticky note someplace. Thank you. If I can remember how, I'm pretty sure I'll remember how to do it. Check the image. Okay, um, next thing down is alright, on page six.
Yep.
Um, the wording which, which was awkward, we took out the title here, so you're just deleting exemption, not deemed.
It makes sense. It's not actually a title. Um, i- i- if you look at D, that's not a title. It's, it's an action. Um, that the, but it is correct that the wording was aw- awkward, uh, and Charlotte agreed that it could be dropped.
That's good. Okay, that was easy. Alright, here's another one for Charlotte. Um, okay. On page seven.
Yes.
Under E. Under E. Um, we're taking out?
No, no, not yet. Um, uh, the, there are still, there are still conversations going on about this. Um, so this can't be, this can't, this is not resolved yet.
Okay. Sometimes can be deleted.
Does that the affidavit one?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I, I saw that back and forth.
What's not resolved is where it's gonna go and how it's gonna go in there.
Oh, so did you understand what? Did you understand what Al was suggesting?
Yes.
Okay. So it's still, still under discussion with Charlotte, you mean?
Yes.
Got it.
Okay, so that's pending. Uh, next thing on the agenda will be page eight, under H, and I think a lot of this is just, I should have caught this to correct it earlier, building permit.
No.
Uh, must remain visible until the authorized work has been
completed.
Okay, and then uppercase C, uppercase O, uppercase C, uppercase A.
Yeah.
Okay, um, under I.
Right.
Under I, the building permit, uh, let me see. Work to be in accordance with construction.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So is, is it, so as it turns out, the third sentence and the fifth sentence are the same.
Okay.
So, or, we're deleting the fifth sentence.
That works.
Okay, then in discussions with Charlotte, um, is the code in, uh, this is an ad now, is the code enforcement, sorry. J is being merged in with I and it's being changed.
Okay.
So what, right, so if, if the CEO determines that it, that such change warrants an amended bu- building permit, the application for the change of work should be submitted on the same form as the original permit, along with two sets of stamped plans. Amendment fee, she's recommending that an amendment fee be charged by the village. I don't have a number from her yet. Work subject to the amendment must be improved, approved by the code enforcement officer before construction of the changed work. So that is her wording. Um, I recommend we accept it. And, uh, what this means that the master, is that the master fee schedule will need to have an, uh, an amendment fee added to it.
Okay, is everybody okay with the wording? We're okay with the wording? Okay. I am just going to, um, I'm just gonna highlight this, Marie, so that we know that it needs to be added.
Yep. And I think we can delete one of the blank lines between I and J.
I will do. Esther. That goes there. We can do that. That helps. Okay, so we, that's just a new fee note. And delete a space. Revote. That works. Formatting, I'm sorry, I should, should try to catch these formatting things before the meetings. Um, okay, we're on page. Gee, was page 10. I got my tire. I was happy. Got my tire today. Never made anybody so happy to spend a hundred and fifty dollars.
Would have been worse.
But it was, it was worth it because it was a rush job. Um, okay, on page 10, forty dash six. Uh, C. No, C, no.
Yeah, see, we're still, we're still trying to work through this. Um, and I'll get back to that in a moment. But Fran, there's an insert about a stop work order given verbally, and you accept that, that is, that is, um, Charlotte's recommendation.
That's great.
Okay, so that part, okay.
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 So Charlotte would like to have the chapter amended to say, um, regular US mail or nail and mail. Now, according to John, the, um, certi- return receipt requested or certified mail is the standard to use. Charlotte's point is that it doesn't always get signed and, and so you don't always get it back. Um, so I, I, in Charlotte's mind, regular mail is more expedient.
What is, what is the, is it the ZBA that requires you to notify everybody in your area and then with those little cards, you get those back?
Yeah, and, and the H D R B, you have to turn those cards in. That's, that's what made me think that I just assumed it would be that way all across the code, that when you.
And I know, I know you don't always get them back, but.
But at least you, you've made the effort, right? And you know, they're scanned when they're, when they're delivered.
At least you, at least you can have proof that you mailed it, whereas if you go regular mail.
You have no proof, right.
There's no proof that you even mailed it. Never mind that anybody got it.
So, so what Charlotte would like to see is regular mail in here and nail and mail. Now, nail and mail, uh.
What, what are you saying, Marie?
Does that mean?
Nail, N A I L, Nancy Abel, Isaiah Lawrence and Mail. Ma- Mary Abel.
Got it.
Isaiah Lawrence. Nail and mail.
Nail and mail.
Right. Nail and mail is a, an accepted method of notifying uh, whomever it is you're supposed to notify, as long as you can show proof that you have tried three times prior to the nail and mail, that you have attempted to deliver the, the stop work order or whatever it is that we're talking about.
When you're saying nail and mail, do you mean literally put it on the house?
Yes, yes. The house or the business or, or if we're talking about, um, a, a construction site, I guess na- nailing it into the ground, uh, uh, but.
Handing it to the contractor or something.
Well, yes, yes. So, so in-person notification is fine. Nail and mail means you, if you do perform nail and mail, you have to demonstrate that you have tried three times prior to that to deliver the, whatever the materials are. If you deliver it in person to a contractor or whomever, that's sufficient. I mean, you've, you've your responsibility has ended at that point. So if you see, um, in the first sentence, uh, the stop worker is to be served on the owner of the affected property, uh, on the permit holder personally. Okay, so, so handing it to someone who is a responsible party involved in this, in the whatever the order is, is sufficient. If you can't do that, then you, then you do, um, United States mail and, and John's recommendation is to go registered, registered, certified and regular mail. And, yeah.
John says registered and regular?
Yes.
Charlotte says regular and nail and mail.
Charlotte says regular. Charlotte would also like to, to do just nail and mail. John says nail and mail requires proof that you've tried three previous times. So I'm still working with Charlotte on how this would be reflected here and potentially in other places as well.
So Marie, you mean, you mean she would, she would have to demonstrate that she had attempted to have to personally deliver three times before she posted it, before she nailed it?
Well, it's th- three times either through in-person delivery by mail or by certified mail. So you have to.
Then, and then the, the nail is the last one.
Right, right, exactly.
That's, I mean, how long do you have to wait between each of these attempts before you actually try to?
You, it, it would seem to me, you know that I'm not a lawyer, but it would seem to me that if you tried on Monday to deliver personally, on Tuesday to deliver personally, and on Wednesday to deliver personally, and that was not successful, then you could do a nail and mail. That's my interpretation.
So nail and mail happens at the same time. There's three personal attempts and then nail and mail happens at the same.
No, so nail and mail.
Trying really hard. It doesn't seem that complicated.
No, 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 no. Y- your questions are valid. Nail and mail requires three prior attempts to deliver the materials. If you try, in my opinion, in my opinion, if you go to a construction site three times, three different days, and you, no one is there, uh, uh, then you've attempted to do that. One could argue, again, I'm not a lawyer, one could argue that if you see a vacant construction site, that's, trying to deliver in person doesn't work. You've got to do mail.
I know, but, but to prove that you tried it three times, how do you prove it? You know, I walked up and nobody was there and.
That's what I say, Frank. That's what I say, Frank. So.
I, I would tend to go John's route over Charlotte's. Um, not that I don't approve, you know, agree with Charlotte, but, um, and John is saying certified or regular mail or?
Certified and.
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 And, that's what he's saying. Yeah.
So do we have to?
Charlotte is being very close conscious. She points out that the cost of registered or certified is expensive and regular mail is just a fifty-five cent or whatever, whatever it is.
We can, we can swear, I never got it. I never get anything.
Yeah.
And don't wait for today's mail goes, no offense or anything. He can probably believe it.
So, so, so more, I need to do more work on this one.
Okay.
So for the stop work orders, let, let's say, this is saying that you have to, it has to be served on the owner, whoever's the permit holder. So let's take, let's take the job at McCormish's on Rock Street. Um, you have a contractor there, Mr. McCormish isn't around, and so how, how do you stop the work then?
Okay.
If you can't find the owner, he can keep going?
Yes, so read this, the section that we just inserted. A stop work order given verbally will have the same force of effect as a stop work order, provided the written documentation is furnished within five business states.
Well, but it says served on the owner of the affected property.
Yes.
Owner or representative would be better.
Uh, a, a good point. I can check on that.
Yeah, if it's just a permit holder or, or the owner, then a construction person operating the heavy equipment could just keep on going because he's neither.
Good point. I'll follow up on that.
I'm, I'm putting this in just as a suggestion, so we don't forget.
I mean, we have to, there has to be a way to stop somebody that's actually doing work immediately.
Right.
I mean, if. Yeah, okay. All right, so you'll check on that and we're working on the nail and mail thing.
Yeah.
Or maybe is it also, just, just as a thought, when you're having that discussion, the contractor?
Yeah, I, I'll see what, what can, what is.
Representative wouldn't actually be a contractor either.
Yeah.
Yeah, what I'm gonna ask John is, does it have to be the owner or whatever the other phrases in there, or can it be a worker?
Right.
Okay, uh, a temporary certi- sorry, the next one is temporary certificate. That's on page eleven. D is in dog.
Mm-hmm.
There's no change here, but Charlotte is recommending that we have a fee in the master fee schedule for, um, temporary certificates. She has not yet recommended the amount that she's re- she has not yet identified the amount that she's recommending.
Good.
Okay. So this is another master fee schedules.
Yep.
I will leave that for Charlotte. Um, indent, I can do that. Alright. On page twelve, forty-ten A, permit required, no person, show demolish, any principal accessory building or any portion without a valid building permit issued by the code enforcement officer. Charlotte points out that under the definition of accessory buildings, a fence, a doghouse room could fall under the requirement of a building permit to demolish it. Is that what we wanted? So we're basically saying.
So the definition of an accessory builder or an accessory structure, uh, would include a fence, a shed, a doghouse.
Why does, why does fence, why does fence, uh, under structure?
Yeah, that's what she said.
Hmm. I wouldn't have thought of fences. I mean, you asked about, you asked about in the district and in the district, it's any material change that's visible from the public right of way. But I'm, would you, would you want it to be? I mean, I don't think you mean to completely lock down small things. I mean, I don't know, what did you, I wasn't around when you read it. What, what were you intending?
I wasn't intending anything, but Charlotte brought this up.
No, our definition in, go ahead, Marie, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
In this chapter, our definitions of supplementary, supplemental building or structure, the use of which is incidental to that of a main or principal building or structure and located in the same lot, the use of which requires location on the ground or attachment to something having location on the ground. Um, I wouldn't, I wouldn't assume that's a fence. I wouldn't even assume it's a doghouse, but, um, the use of which is incidental to that of the main or principal building or structure. Uh, is a doghouse incidental to that of the main or principal?
Yeah.
That's the de- definition in this chapter.
Yeah, it's an accessory building or an accessory structure.
Did. Did she have an alternative recommendation?
No.
Come on, Charlotte.
Well, I mean, I don't, without looking at how another code handles it, I don't know how you would.
Yeah.
Get around that.
Well, the question for you folks is do, is that what you want to have happen?
I think what we want to happen is an accessory building, like a garage or something that's of substantial size or, or, uh, on a lot, not like a fence or a doghouse or something small.
I mean, maybe you, maybe you go back to definitions and you s- say this excludes uh, and how, uh, structures that house animals, playhouses. Right? Because you're right, David.
I don't think you want to exclude playhouses. They can be pretty big.
Well, but should someone not demolish a, a playhouse without a permit?
Yeah, that, yeah.
You could, you could convert your garage to a playhouse because you could convert your garage to a playhouse and say that's.
But that's a use issue of a garage, if a structure isn't an ancillary structure like a garage. I guess I was, I'm envisioning like a backyard playhouse as opposed to a garage that got converted to a playhouse.
Yeah.
A garage is going to be, a garage on small lots could potentially make a huge difference to a neighbor in terms of screening, et cetera.
Putting aside screening or anything, um, the definition of an accessory building or does include those. Now, what I can do in chapter 134, we're trying to, we tried to identify the size of an accessory building that would qualify. And I can't remember what that size was, but I can go back to that and see what, uh, we might be able to do with this.
So accessory buildings need a permit, all of them?
Fences.
What's that?
Fences.
Yes, what, I mean, what about doghouses or smaller things that they need?
I, I, yeah, I'll go back to 134. I think we included a size limitation above which you required a permit. And it was, it was not that big, but I suspect that a doghouse, I'm thinking a doghouse is maybe three feet wide, three feet long, maybe three feet tall. I, I think it was something like 12 or 15 square feet. So let me see if I, what I can find in 134.
Dave, I didn't hear the question that you just asked.
What's that?
I didn't hear the question that you just asked.
I was wondering what, if, if this, if the one way around it is accessory buildings cannot be taken down that had required a permit to start with.
Oh.
So if something needed a permit, then, you know, and that didn't include doghouses or smaller things, then we, that would exclude them and you could.
But we've got lots of pre-existing accessory structures in the village.
Right.
That wouldn't have had permits. That's the only downside, but I like, the logic's good.
The, the other side of this is we could, we could leave it like this and, and the code enforcement officer could look at a request for a permit to take down a doghouse and just stamp it off and say, hey, you don't need this and go on.
Except that what will probably happen is somebody will take something down and then say, oh my God, I didn't realize.
Yeah, which is, I mean, like, you know, my neighbor has put up two, if you want to say accessory buildings in his backyard. And they're not small, they're not doghouse size, they're fairly big. They're probably seven, eight feet high and, you know, um, and, you know, I mean, this would cover that, although he had no permits to put them up to begin with.
Like a garden shed kind of thing?
Yeah, that kind of stuff, but they're, they're more permanent than just a, a shed you buy at, you know, Home Depot and that kind of stuff.
Well, what we're, what we're trying to do in 134 is require a building permit for any garden shed that you buy at Home Depot. Right now, the way the code is implemented is my understanding that unless it has a foundation, it doesn't require a building permit.
I don't know if that's true.
I believe that's, I believe that's the way it's currently implemented.
Foundation meaning it's permanent to the ground?
Yes, but, but, I mean, anything, any shed that you buy goes on the ground.
Sometimes you can, I mean, I believe, I may be wrong, but I think when the, uh, American Legion put the shed in the back of their building, they, they put it on a slab.
Well, so for a long time, we weren't getting referrals for sheds because the building inspector at the time was following this logic that Marie lays out and says, well, the code, you know, would say that the code says if it doesn't have a foundation, it doesn't count. And so there was a whole series of sheds that got put up in that way. Um, well, it doesn't have a foundation, so it's not permanent. But, you know, those things can last quite a long time.
And they.
So you're saying you closed that loophole, Marie?
What, tried to in 134, Kathleen. Now, you'll see in the question, uh, if you open up all of the questions, the question that I raised is, do we want this to say something like anything that requires a building permit for construction would require a building permit for de- permit for demolition?
Right, which is what, yeah.
That's what Dave was saying, right?
Yeah.
But, but does that also mean, in theory? Right? So the, my, my 1915, if I had a 1915 garage, I would not have had a building permit for it. So is, are you just saying if you, if a building you have meets the current descriptions of what an accessory building is, you would need to have a per- a demolition permit to take it down?
Yeah.
Well, that's tricky. You got to make sure you get that language right then.
Yeah.
Basically, we're not saying anything that you got a permit for, we're saying anything that currently requires a permit.
That's right.
That would currently require.
Yeah, would then require it to be taken down, not, not, you know.
Do you, did you get this?
Right, right.
So, so on, on this one, I, I will do some research on 134 and get back.
Okay. Okay, application for, uh, the application of a demolition of a principal building or accessory building, this is the same topic, right, Marie?
Right.
Okay, that would be C. Okay, now we're at the, uh, page 13. Uh, it is 4010, C10? 4010C10. Village Board of Trustees, okay, if I can figure that out and everything's out of line, so it drives me crazy.
Right.
Uh, Dave's comment, go ahead, Marie.
So Charlotte says this can come out.
This whole, the Village Board of Trustees shall approve it, did I just take the whole thing out?
Yep.
That handles that.
Do we have to replace it with anything?
Nope.
So all of this, A, B, C, D, and E?
And the following paragraph.
Even better.
Yeah, because I get, I get you around the village board making a decision and the village board being the body you appeal to, right?
Okay, so all of this came out, uh, that was that, that takes care of, oops, my screen doesn't like me. I don't want that either. That comes out. Next. That comes out. And that comes out. Okay. And we're left, we're left with a T.
And a 10. Great.
How's that? Okay, so you look at, we saved the whole page. All right, down to 4012 on page 14, we're adding.
Yes. Yes, what happened here is we had parentheses, one parentheses, parentheses, two parentheses, and that was it.
Oh, right.
And, and it referred to paragraphs one and two. Paragraph two referred to paragraphs one and two. So what we're doing here is we're inserting number two, which is dormitory inspections. And then number three says, anything that's not included in one or two um, shall be performed at least once every 36 months.
Okay, everybody good with that?
Yes.
Let's hope we don't ever have dormitories, but besides that. I, I was talking to Charlotte the other day, she's, she's, was doing four inspections on Saturday, I believe. She has four lined up to do.
And I think she had five today.
Did she? God bless. And she said people are coming in, you know, saying yes, and jumping at it, so that's good.
Right.
Yeah, it seems like people, from what I've heard, are, are actually happy to have.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's, she's not having problems. Nobody's complaining about the cost and I guess it's minimal, really. Um, and, and she's, she's jumping right in there, well, thank God, because for years and years and years and years, we've needed this. Okay.
Now, according, according to Jeff, about 25% of them are failing.
Really?
Oh, gosh.
Well. Are they failing badly?
That's a good thing. That's a good thing. She's found them, right? And thus far, she's had pushback on only one.
Yeah, she told me that, which is not a, at all a problem.
No, no.
And if they're not failing badly and if the things that they're correcting and she's going back and re-inspecting, that's great.
Yeah.
That was the whole goal, yeah.
Yeah.
Good stuff.
Okay, page 16, 40, 13, 4013, we added, looks like we added a whole paragraph here.
This was at Charlotte's recommendation.
A violation which was found, uh, okay, is this part of D? Because it starts with other capitals, says provided however.
Uh, so, typos on my part. D should be, um, semicolon?
Complaint semicolon.
Okay.
And then E is, I would, I would make E, good, semicolon goes after complaint.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank, thank God we have Charlotte right now.
Yeah, she really is.
Code update, because she's added, she's added so much expertise. Not just to the, to the code, but also overall.
She's worth her weight in gold.
She is.
Speaking, speaking of people worth it, worth their weight in gold, we have to talk salary soon. Um, if a violation was found, uh, filing such report with a complaint, provided however that this is definitely a separate paragraph.
Yeah, that's what she said.
It reads strange ways.
Yeah, it does. Um, to me, the process for responding to a complaint shall include such of the following steps. Performing an inspection if a violation is found, conditions that are subject to me.
So make the provided capital P.
Provided. Can we take out the however?
Uh, this is the wording she gave me.
Okay, provided that nothing in this subsection shall be construed as permitting an inspection under any circumstances under which.
Yeah, it's not a correct, it's not a complete sentence.
Yeah. It, it, it seems to me more, more as, all right, I, I have to reread it because of violation.
Oh, I, I think I, okay. Go ahead, you, you look.
I think it is a complete sentence. But Fran, take a look at it.
Okay, um, I'm just up with the complaint. Shall include such of the following, performing. I have, I have to read the whole thing.
Yeah, you can do that.
Process is responding to a complaint. Shall include such as the following steps for performing inspection.
Why don't you leave it open and, and you can review it at some other time?
I would, uh, yeah, e- even in B, if we took out if a violation is found to exist. All right, let me, let me review that part again, because to me, it, it just seems weird. Sorry, guys.
No, I, I, it's strange to me too, Fran.
Now, as it turns out, the next section is parking garages. Um, parking garages, uh, that fall into this are parking garages that are multiple stories. And they are not attached to a house and they are not, so it, it's multiple stories, not attached to a house or townhouse. So we don't have any.
But it's in anticipation, right?
John's recommendation is to leave it in. Charlotte also agrees with leaving it in. Now, here's the problem. The, this section refers to the village in multiple case, in multiple areas. Um, and I'm trying to work out with Charlotte. I, I don't want to leave the village as, um, the phrase in, in this section. I, I would like to say it's the village appointed engineer. Charlotte disagrees with that. Uh, so I have to, I have to work through this with her to get it to the point where it is an acceptable wording and doesn't identify the village as receiving a condition assessment report and taking action on it. So, um, I'd like to have, come back with this to this some point.
So that's this whole section, right?
Yeah, the whole section.
Oh, yeah, I didn't want to do that at all.
Where, oh, tell me when you're ready.
Good.
Um, I have a question about record keeping when we get there, at 4015.
Uh, okay, I'm just going to make corrections. Corrections, corrections. I see the village, okay. Okay, and that's.
There are multiple places and I'll come back with a recommendation for each of them.
Okay. And you, all right, you're talking about. Marie, when did, when did you make these that I missed? They have been out of commission. Okay, 4015, record keeping. Uh, okay, we're, the code enforcement shall keep records of all transactions and activities conducted according to New York State Record Retention Regulations, including records of all applications received, reviewed, and approved, with taking out or denied.
That is correct. She doesn't have to keep records of those.
Okay.
And my, never mind, my question was answered, so.
That was that?
No, it was before, but I, I was staring right at the screen and not, my brain was not absorbing that it did say New York State Record Retention Regulations.
Okay, certified mail, this is back to the certified mail question back on page, um, this is page 21, um, and we're checking with Charlotte on that. Okay, my question, why would I write it like that? Appearance tickets, code enforcement officer with each inspector are authorized to issue appearance tickets for any violation of any local law, irrespective of whether an order of remedy has been issued. I guess our question was, that was our question. Who recommended this and how would the offender know what the offense was?
And you see my responses.
This is under the title violation, Charlotte recommended this in September. I've asked her if it can be deleted. Okay, so we don't know yet, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that's another one.
Either deleted or amended, so that you're not hauling someone off to give them an appearance ticket before they get notice.
That seems to be as.
Well, as it, as it turns out, they, they can issue an appearance ticket whether or not an order to remedy has been issued. So th- this is violations, all types of violations, not just an order to remedy.
Okay.
Okay, so shall we leave chapter 40?
Yeah.
So chapter 40.
Okay, I'm going to come right back, sorry to head out again.
Okay. And we're, next chapter is 36, I knew we'd get there eventually.
You'll see two 36s in the Google. Uh, one is the 3, 3, 221 version.
Yes.
And that's the version that John has recommended, um, a day or two ago.
Okay, this is, um, so that's the one we're going to look at. As opposed to someplace on my desk here, my other desk, my in-between desk. I had one that Dave wrote. I can't go to it, I just had it. Okay, I will find it. Okay, um, so chapter 36, the 3221 version.
Right.
I have a, a sort of general comment about the whole chapter. Um, I feel like. Um, I feel like the language is so florid. Um, compared to other chapters that, that we have already reviewed. It seems like you could use plain English. And achieve the same goals. It's, it's just, it's just a lot of.
If you, i- if your comparison base is chapter one hundred and chapter forty-two, you're correct. But if you take a look at any of the other chapters, the wording here is consistent with those other chapters.
Just seems like if you have an opportunity to, to take code and put it into accessible language, you should. It's not a long chapter.
It's, I, I guess it's more of a legal issue, illegal.
Yeah, and this, this is what John has recommended.
I, I apologize, but I really have not.
Do you wanna skip this?
Uh, it's up to everyone else that we want, because I have not looked at chapter thirty-six.
Okay.
John is totally ignored pretty much, you know, my, my question. I, I don't know how to phrase it, maybe if everyone could help me on this. When I ask, when I send something, it doesn't necessarily mean I want it to be exactly the same. And that's how it always comes back. I'll say, this like, you know, I sent John something saying, this is what I found in other chapters of other municipalities. Which I assume have attorneys that are looking at them and creating them. And it doesn't mean that I think that this is exactly how it should be, but, and, and I've done this with other things, not just this, where I, where I bring up an example. And people take it, you know, for me, it's like word for word that this is what I wanted. I basically thought we could really reduce what we have in here, and there's all this stuff about public hearing. And I won't get into it anymore. If John wants this and you want it, I don't care. I won't be here when there's a public hearing, and I won't go. The public hearing, I just can't imagine what, we have a dangerous issue or, or something where we consider dangerous. And we're gonna go through a public hearing, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to notice that, we're gonna have to wait for that. And, and so how dangerous is this? I mean.
Yeah, I have to read it through.
About something happening. I, 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 I just don't understand how we're gonna go through three weeks of, to have a public hearing and notice and everything else. And who's gonna show up at that? If it's all about us a- having access to someone's private property to take care of something.
So if you.
I, I don't want to argue with it. I'm just saying, I, I just really get, like, get, get lost and, you know, and, you know, maybe you could help me out. And when I send something, what I have to say to actually, you know, get my point across, that, you know, like in this case, it was. Can we do something shorter than this? I know it's sick five pages or whatever, but it, it just seems like it could be condensed into one paragraph. That's what I was saying. But instead, it's like, well, this doesn't have this, or this doesn't have that, or whatever, and it. So it's not like, yeah, we can simplify, so. I, I'm not gonna argue, just, I, I'm fine with it. Six pages, you can make it twenty if you want.
I have, I'd like, I'd like to take a look at it, because I really have not looked at it. Uh, and I agree with you. I mean, I think in the beginning, we talked about having a public hearing when the tree's falling on somebody's head. Um, which seemed to make no sense at that point, but I haven't read through this at all, so I really do need to sort of do that.
Okay, keep, keep in mind that there is thirty-six dash, dash nine, removal in cases of emergency, which does not require a public hearing.
And that's, that's what I understood to be happening here, is that if it was not emergent. Ideally, you would go through a process of notifying that you are entering private property. To remedy a condition, which is a big reach for a local government to go into someone's yard and deal with something. But if it were emergent, thirty-nine, thirty-six-nine gives you the capacity to do it. Um, to do it without a public hearing. So I understood that. I think too, Dave, part of the. When you first sent those options around for language, I thought I understood you to be saying. Could we, could we, could we be more plain in, in the presentation of this chapter? And I think s- you couldn't, in addition to. You could make it more plain by making the language more plain. Part of it is that we're talking about brush, and it's like, wherefore thereas. And I understand that that's how, that's how old, older codes read, but we have an opportunity here to make a simple chapter about brush. Um, and trees sound like a simple topic that anyone can read and access easily.
And this, this came down to, I see four pages, but let me take a look, and I have, uh, I've got time tomorrow, I'll be hanging out waiting, so, um. I'll take some printed out versions and take a look and see what, uh, what it looks like. I'm sorry, I didn't get to it.
No problem.
So let's go to vehicles and traffic.
Yay, my favorite, my favorite. Okay, V and T. When are we doing code again?
Never, would never work for you.
No, sorry, no, no, we're almost, we're almost at the point where we don't have to do anything, but code. Okay. All right, so I will get to that. Okay, chapter one twenty-six, V and T. And I know we started looking at some of this stuff and, um. We're talking about making streets one-way. Let's see where we are. Okay.
The first, the first one is in. One twenty-six, sorry, page eight, one twenty-six eighteen point two.
And I don't know why my question was there. I left it there, but I can't remember why. Um. I don't know if it was the way the breakdown was, one twenty-six eighteen point two. I don't know.
This, that, no, no, this is unusual, Fran. There's a one twenty-six eighteen, a one twenty-six eighteen point one. And a one twenty-six eighteen point two. I've never seen this, I've never seen this done before, uh, but it happened thirty years ago. And, and.
I assume that it was insertions in a place where there wasn't, they needed to, they needed to insert things that were too complex for a single item. Between the two existing items.
I, I have no idea why it was done.
I'm gonna leave it at that point.
Yeah.
I don't know why. It, it just seemed to be, the numbering seemed to be all off, but that's not, neither here nor there right now in terms of law. So I'm just deleting it. Okay, um. On page nine, on the, um, the handicapped parking spaces. I know, I know handicapped is probably not the right word, but, yeah.
No, it is. I think it's correct.
It is, it is, okay. The first one, uh, space in front of one sixteen, main, I did confirm that it's one sixteen. I walked down the block and stood there. So it is in front of one sixteen. And the one to ninety-one, main, I know was ninety-one also. Bless you.
Thank you, just coughing.
Okay, I'm sorry, the, page eleven, penalties for speeding violations. Every person convicted of a violation of one twenty-six, ten of this chapter shall be punished by. Okay, this is, I apologize, okay, this is a section I. Saw Kathy briefly last week, and I told her I'd like to get together with her, um, to review these numbers. Part of these numbers come from state, part of them come from us, and I have to definitely go over that again to make sure what comes from where. Um, there are some instances when tickets are given out that they go just by the state numbers. So I have to sit down with her and spend a, a good hour or so, uh, maybe with Larry also, reviewing the penalties. So we can't look at, at amounts until I sit down with Kathy.
And the same thing is true for table one.
Right.
Although I do have, um, a summons here. But I don't know, it's not dated, so I can't, I can't confirm the numbers.
Okay. And I will try to get with her, um. Probably not next week, maybe the week after, but I'll try to, to schedule some time with her. Okay. Okay, we're, we're working on just correcting some.
So now are we dropping down to one twenty-six twenty-five?
No.
I'm just correcting some dollar sign stuff.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that takes care of that. We're just correcting formats of, of how the numbers were written. Okay, one twenty-six twenty-four, we have to still wait for that to, to clarify. One twenty-six twenty-five, I don't see anything. Okay, we're down to the charts again, page fifteen. So we're talking about the first thing, one-way roadways, um, and we talked about whether or not we should have, uh, B Street one-way. Whether, uh, and so on, and then we went off to the conversation about, uh, Fair Street and the hours to have Fair Street. Uh, one-way, so do we, do we want to make a determination of how we want B Street at this point as a suggestion, or do I want to leave it alone?
I was putting it forward as part of a larger suggestion that B Orchard, Locust Ridge, and Cedar all alternate. Because of the school traffic. And the ambulance traffic. Um, so it would be Cedar going north, Locust Ridge going south, Orchard going north. B going south.
And Fishkill, two ways?
Well, I think Fishkill, I think Fishkill, you have to have both ways, don't you? Because it mountain dumps onto it.
No, no, you don't have to. No, we have other streets in the village that, that dump onto something that is, is one-way or two ways. It, it can be whatever you want.
I, I mean, it seems like, it doesn't seem like it's the same kind of issue there, because there's not as much. School-related parking on that street. That's my impression, but I'm basing that on nothing other than my impression being in the neighborhood during the day. That Fishkill seems to be all right. It's, it's B that's so narrow, and then up.
And then Cedar changes, was the Cedar.
I mean, people already think, people already think that Locust Ridge is one-way. And on Orchard, the folks on Orchard have taken to parking their cars out a little wider. To make it look like a one-way street during the day to slow the traffic down. So there's a little, um, guerrilla parking and traffic management happening there.
What, I mean, I don't know whether the best way to do this is for us to make the change and see what the public hearing. See what the public says about it, or, I mean, we can't discuss it with the public unless we have something to discuss.
Right, I mean, that's why, that's why I'm putting it forward, to see what people have to say.
I mean, I, I'm, no, I'm not opposed to making, I, you know, I always wanted to make Cedar one-way all the time, because the back and forth. You know, there's so many hours of school and so on.
Oh, Locust, yeah, Cedar is one-way all the time.
Locust, yes. That made no sense to me. Back, I mean, there's a couple of other streets down this end that I wanted to make one-way too, so. So what do we want to do? We want to add these streets as one-way streets, or do we want to think about them longer, or what?
No, leave them in as one-way. Yeah, the one question that I have is, uh, Haldane Street, Dave, what was the recommendation? Which direction, which direction for Haldane Street? Toward, toward, um.
I think it should go, I thought it should go west. From, from more towards.
Toward high.
Right, but Evan thought it should go the opposite way, and I can't remember his rationale.
His logic is he doesn't want to keep traffic coming. It would be coming towards his house. I think west is, is better.
So make it west, and we'll get comments back.
And what is the, what is the concern there? The, the top park, parking and kids darting in and out?
No.
There's parking on both sides.
It's too narrow.
Parking on both sides of the two-way street, you can't, you can't get traffic in two ways. I mean, if I'm, if I'm driving west on Haldane, when there's cars on both sides, and somebody's coming east, they can't come through. One of us has to back up.
And in some case, and in some cases, people park away from the curbs, and you can't get through anyway. In addition, the, the fire truck couldn't get through.
Oh, well, that's important. When Anne's house burns, you mean?
Oh, I have no idea.
That's, no, they came from, uh, from Main Street that night.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna let go back up, and then we will discuss. I'm going to accept B Street for the time being, and we'll see who else. Okay, the next thing is Fair Street, and the question, and I brought this up till, I asked Larry about this. Because I told him we were having this discussion. Let me see if I can find Larry's comments. In making the, making Fair Street, um, one-way on Sundays until six o'clock, it's really got nothing to do with the church. The church doesn't need it to be one-way after like one-thirty, two o'clock. Larry's comments, uh, basically, uh, and I said to him. This pushback on keeping Fair Street one-way until six on Sundays. So. He's, I said, it was my thinking that it would be to allow more parking for visitors and shoppers. What are your thoughts? He says, you're exactly right. It's not for the church. It's the additional parking. He said, maybe you want to make it seasonal, May to November. He said, most of the parking after the last mass ends at one o'clock, if shoppers and visitors, um, and the rest of it is shoppers and visitors to the village.
And how to, have you had any feedback from people who live in that block?
Yes, we've had feedback that cars that are parked there block the entrance and exit from their driveways. It has nothing to do with whether or not it's one-way. It's on Sundays, they sometimes can't get out and sometimes can't get in.
That's what I meant, and there's park, there's cars parked there.
Right, now what we're, we're thinking of doing is metering Fair Street on Sundays. From one o'clock to six o'clock.
Like in a zone, like we talked about it?
Yeah.
Somebody was talking about.
What we also need to do is, is, um, some of these driveways need to be defined by paint. Some of these street corners need to be defined. I mean, I know that.
One, one of the problems isn't that they're parking on, in their, uh, across their parkings, uh, their driveways. That it's, uh, backing out, that the car, you know, opposite their driveway.
Right, yeah, okay.
More difficult for them to turn. I, I think that's a little bit of a stretch, but I can see that it's definitely probably not optimal.
So, so if you get, if you accommodate all of the driveways that people have to get in and out of. How many parking spaces do you actually gain from the corner to northern?
I'm gonna say about thirty.
So it's a lot.
Yeah.
Well, if you, you can do something to mitigate the driveway impacts, it seems smart to meter it and let people park there.
Yes.
Two-lane highway, and, you know, it's, uh, counties, I believe, well.
No, it's ours.
It can, yeah, it's ours, but it continues. It's not like a narrow street. And everyone else has to contend with people parking across from their driveway.
Right.
That's true, Dave.
Yeah, so that's not available. So do we want to leave the hours changed from six AM to six PM on Sundays, and then?
I think so.
Well, now that I, now that I understand why, I'm okay with it. I thought it was accommodating mass times that didn't exist, but now I get it.
Yeah, and Saturdays from four to seven, and the reason why I changed five to four is because the mass used to be at five thirty, it's now five.
Yeah, Fran, what I would do is I would move Saturdays first and then Sundays.
Why?
Logical. People think Sa- Saturday first and Sunday.
And now, does that accommodate confessions, or no?
That's, I don't think that's necessary.
I don't think anybody goes to confession anymore.
No, Kathleen.
You'd be surprised.
The church parking lot is available for.
For confession, there we go.
And they actually, I actually stopped in church.
What?
Is it drive-through confession?
Interestingly, they do it in the sacristy now. And I actually went in there one Saturday, which I, I don't ever go to confession here. You know, you don't.
Don't go to your own priest.
You don't go to your own priest now, but I was surprised at how many people were actually in there for confession, and I didn't know. I didn't know that Bob McCaffrey was supposed to be telling me when to go and when not to go. Bob's like, yeah, you know, those people are all online over there and over there. I'm like, okay, never mind. No, anyway, let me just get this. It's hard to get, because I, what I'd like to do, and what I started doing years ago with Mary Sari, is put some of this stuff into actual tables. So all this craziness moving stuff around, but. All right, the show will play only on Saturdays from four to seven, and Sundays from six. AM to six PM, and this end comes out. All right, so we accomplished that much. Works.
You need something after seven PM, right? Like, I don't know.
And Sunday.
Like an end.
What, what category are we looking at now? This is one-way still, yeah.
This is one-way, yeah.
Which one is Fish? Fish is the one on the corner where the brick, where the garage used to be, where the dance studio is, right?
Yes, yes, it goes from main to north.
Got it.
And that's a new name for it. It used to be.
Oh, that was mine. I didn't know it was market.
Yeah, market used to go from north to, um, Metro North.
And it's not that long ago that we made that. Yeah, that was always one-way, okay.
Why did that change happen?
I don't know, I wasn't living here then.
Maybe that was the fish. Maybe that was the fish.
Go ahead, no. Okay, we're down on page sixteen. Locust Ridge, this is the one, can we make this one-way all times?
Yes, I I think the logic that that I think Kathleen offered is people have an an opportunity to comment on it.
Yep.
So we're making it one-way going south, right? From Mountain to Maine?
Correct. And now does that?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mountain Avenue?
No, no, from, from Mountain to Maine.
Oh. Locust.
So when?
Yes.
When you're doing, like, this one was changed by local law in two thousand and three. And now you're changing what the change was in two thousand and three. Does that legislative history then go away?
No.
No.
It'll be comma amended.
Got it.
Sorry, trying to reorganize stuff.
So in two thousand and three, that they, it was one-way and they turned it back into two-way?
I think that's when they instituted the one-way at certain times of day stuff.
Oh, right, okay.
Cat is scratching to get out. Sorry, this is like the most disrupted event ever.
Becomes Main Street. Yeah, not having, not having a table is enough to drive you nuts. Okay, alright, um, let me see. Now we got Orchard going north the entire length. Is that consistent? Because I'm trying to picture. We got Locust going south. Orchard is the next one that goes north. Okay, Railroad. This is the question. Railroad going west the entire length. Now Railroad. I think Railroad was one-way and then I think they took, they repealed it in nineteen ninety-three. Now we're putting it back in.
I had a thought about this when I got later into the chapter. And that is, if you take away, well, I don't think they're actually legal right now, but if you cannot U-turn at the bottom. Of Main Street where the tracks are. Your option to get back up the hill is to go. Through Depot Square and up Railroad. And if Railroad goes the other way, how can you get back through?
You can't turn on, make a U-turn on Depot Square.
Well, there's still.
You can U-turn below Lund Terrace.
Okay, that wasn't, that wasn't clear to me. Okay.
No U-turn stops at Lund Terrace from what I can remember.
Okay.
You don't want to do a U-turn at Lund Terrace.
No, you want to do it in the, in the little circle in there.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
But some people like doing it on Lund Terrace and they back up really.
That is so, that is so dangerous.
I've heard Larry and Bugsy go with this because Larry wants to put a, a, some kind of a little island in the middle there. And Bugsy's like, yeah, but then we can't plow it, we can't.
And and tractor trailers can't turn around in it.
Yeah, that's the issue with this. We need to put a big sign at the beginning, you know, one of these flashing signs at ninety that says, listen, this is a small village with small streets. Consider where you're going. Okay, so Railroad, are we leaving Railroad going west?
Yes. Fran, we have a, a forty-foot trailer that delivers our goods. You can't prohibit tractor trailers from delivering stuff on Main Street.
I don't want to prohibit them, but I just want them to be aware of some of the small streets.
And Marie, it's only two blocks. You can go up and get stuff and get a hand truck and bring it.
Just like you could pick up a case of wine. I, I'm still, I'm hesitating about Road Avenue. I guess it doesn't matter because you get the three of you are, are good with it, but I still, I still think that's a.
Yeah, that's, that's a.
Cutting off a pathway that's safer than U-turning in the middle of Depot Square.
The problem with Railroad Avenue, um. Yeah, I mean, if it goes east, we have to definitely prevent trucks from going that way because they can't make that turn.
So why not a no trucks sign or prohibit trucks? Because it doesn't matter, you think?
Yeah, we have a written no truck sign at the entrance to Depot Square and it doesn't.
I don't even remember seeing that. I know we said that before, but I don't remember seeing that.
Yeah, I saw it a couple of weeks ago.
We need to make it bigger, bigger and flashier or something.
And it sounded like you said that the folks who live on this street are wanting.
The folks who live on Stone Street. Or the ones who have the problem with the trucks getting stuck.
I see.
Because they get up there and then they can't turn.
And and the Railroad Avenue people as well. Um, Patrick was relating how many times he's had to go out to try to help somebody back out.
Oh, I see. He lives at the bottom. Okay. There really isn't a good way to get around that part of the village.
Okay, prohibited turns at intersections. What am I doing here? Now, I, when I did this, I had maps all over the place. I knew what I was talking about. Now I don't have the map open. Cross street, you cannot turn right. Okay, you can't turn right onto Fair Street and then this is the Saturday, Sunday thing. And I will. So this is prohibited because of the one-way on Sunday.
What did we say? This is the turn section, not the one-way?
Says, yeah, this is the you cannot turn, prohibited turns at intersections.
So any, any street that's a one-way street, you would have a prohibited turn at that intersection. When that street goes toward that intersection.
So we need to go through and modify what we put in above. The streets that we want way above.
Yes, we have to make sure that, yeah, we have to add those. I know that's not exactly straight. Okay, um, Kembo Avenue, instead of saying east and south, I was trying to make it clearer by making it left and right. I don't know if that's good. For people. In my brain, if I'm driving down the street and somebody says you can't turn east, I, you know. I think I finally got it, but I'm not sure everybody else will. So if you said you can't turn right, I think it was clearer. So Kembo, if you're going north, you cannot turn right onto Wall Street.
That's correct.
Okay.
And Kembo, if you're going north, you can't turn left into Rock Street.
Right, okay.
And there's only one option, only one option there.
Straight.
Right. And Market, um, if you're going north, you cannot turn left onto New Street. New Street comes out, okay.
Correct.
Okay. And Main Street. Alright, I know we have to add more, so I gotta go back and look at this. Main Street, when you're going west, you cannot turn right onto. West Street.
Correct.
Yes. And that's what that is. Uh, Main Street West, when you're going west, you can't turn right onto Church Street.
Correct.
Right?
Correct. And the reverse is, the reverse is true. If you're on Main Street and you're going east, you can't turn left into Church Street.
Okay, so what did I, why do I have this twice? Okay, no, I don't, okay, perfect, I got. Okay, and then you can't turn right onto Kembo. And if you're going east, you can't turn left onto Kembo.
Right.
Okay, so what happened here? Uh, northern, okay, I got you. I know that, I know they're not totally in line, but.
Okay, you can do it later.
Yeah, this really needs to be in, in a table. Northern, when you're going east, um, you cannot turn right onto Garden Street.
And you, and you, when you're going west, you can't turn left into Garden Street.
Right, okay. Okay, northern, when you're going west, you cannot turn. Okay, this is the whole church thing again.
Fran, do you want me to make these tables?
Um, you know, Mary Sari asked me to do that about ten years ago.
So, so your answer is yes?
Yes, please. It would be so much easier if it was in tables and I, I apologize because I never did. I did do tables and other.
Don't make yourself crazy trying to line it up now then, if it's gonna go into it.
Yeah, I'm just trying to correct, um, okay, the twelve-hour accommodation. Uh, what we do have to add, and I'll put myself a note for, the changes for all the one-way streets that we just made. Okay, Railroad. If you're going east, you can't go east on Railroad now.
Correct.
So.
Right, but now, now we need to add Stone Street. You can't go left onto Railroad.
Right, correct.
But that's, that, that's one of the changes you're gonna make when, when all these are ma, being made one-way. So there, there's gonna, there's gonna be, High Street needs to have a, a intersection with Haldane, so.
Okay. Route ninety, northern entrance to Butterfield, you cannot turn left if you're going south. Um, if you're going west. Wall Street, if you're going west, you cannot turn right.
Where? At, at Furnace Street.
At Furnace.
Right. And you can't turn right, you can't turn left at Kembo. No, you can turn, you can turn left at Kembo. I'm wrong.
Okay, and West Street comes out, West Street, uh, West Street. You could, if you're going south on West Street, you cannot turn left onto Maine.
Is Butterfield Road a, is that a, an official village street?
Um, no, it's not, but.
Dangerous or anything, so why is it there?
It's the turnoff ninety that you can't make.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not onto any streets. It's like if it's any.
It's not onto a village street, you're right. It's into a private street.
But it's an odd, it's a place where everybody turns when they shouldn't. On, there's a big no left-hand turn sign on Route ninety, but I don't know legally, can we put it there? It's an entrance to a private property.
Well, and if it's not in the code, the officers can't ticket it, right? They can't ticket someone turning there.
I mean, it's not like when you go into Food Town parking lot, there's an entrance on ninety and an exit on whatever that side street is. Yeah. It's.
Yeah, that would be like, we, if we can do this, then we should go, if you're on Benedict, you can't make a left into the Food Town parking lot.
Right, um.
Maybe.
I just, I don't know.
Not trying to cause grief.
No, no, I know, but I know, I don't know if that legally.
Well, could you say, could you say the Butterfield Development?
No, because there's too many, there's other entrances to the Butterfield Development. The northern entrance to Butterfield. Maybe that's a John question?
Okay, I'll take it.
Question.
John.
So Larry, Larry would probably like it in here.
But he should know, well.
Probably would though. He probably wouldn't know before we. Have John do it.
So one twenty-six, twenty-nine, twenty-nine, Butterfield, Food Town, any others?
Well, I guess.
Well, then it'd be Julia, Julia Road on the other side off ninety. Right, is there any, are there any turns prohibited there?
No.
No, okay.
So I think it would just be those two right now, right? It's going into private property, where else? The banks, no, because the banks are okay. M and T is okay, and that's in, no, it is an M and T, yes. Well, no, it isn't. You can turn into M and T, you just can't come out that way.
Right.
And they regulate that on their lot.
Right.
There are a lot of no-turning signs on, on Haldane property.
But that's not up for our, us to deal with, is it?
Well, that's just it, where, yes, Kathleen, I agree. Although if we regulate the, the exit from Food Town. Would we also regulate the exit from, the entrance from food, to Food Town? That, that is, it is, you are prohibited from exiting at that point.
This is the thing that, that confuses me, Marie, that we, that the, a village gets to, potentially gets to. Have a say about how traffic moves. In and out of school, that school entrance, but we can't control the speed on our own streets next to the school. It just makes no sense to me. I, I, I get the why, but it makes, it's crazy-making.
So, so the why, Kathleen, is that the legislature has not permitted home rule. When it comes to, to traffic speed.
It's ridiculous.
I think, I think Sandy Galiff was trying to push that through one of the, one of her memos that I saw a couple of months ago. That was one of the legislations she was trying to push through.
I mean, if there's any argument for home rule, it's that one.
And I believe if you ask Jeff that he's got, when Anthony Phillips was mayor, probably three or four attempts. Uh, of trying to get, you know, sending all the documentation to the state and they would never agree with.
No, ridiculous.
Anyway, okay, West Street, uh, if you're going north on West Street, you cannot go. You can't go north on West Street to North Street, so that comes out. Um, if you're going south on West Street, you cannot turn left onto Maine. Okay, this is the whole Main Street thing, uh, and one twenty-six thirty.
Yeah.
Uh, no U-turns prohibited, so it used to list every intersection. Main Street, and I believe me, Marie, you checked this, because I took out all the Main Street and intersections and just said the entire length.
Yeah, ju, just take it, take out Route three oh one because three oh one ends at the red light.
Okay.
And this is where I got confused about that U-turn at the bottom, because it looked to me like you couldn't do the U-turn at the bottom of Main Street.
Yeah, I have to look at this because somewhere I think it did say that you could. Very, alright, I, I, it was my um note on September third last year. And basically says, um, we can reword it to say Main Street from the west side of High Street to the west side of Lund Terrace. Um, and I think, Marie, you said you went back and looked at the local law from twenty seventeen. Which basically did intend to add Main Street um as a street in which there are no U-turns. The way it was written, it, there were no U-turns. Nah, no U-turns just at the intersections, not that it mattered because people always make U-turns right in front of the village office. Which is a perfectly good.
That's an intersection, the Fair Street intersection.
I know, but there's a big sign that says no U-turn there. So. Okay, so first thing we're going to do is add Main Street entire length and I'm gonna probably reword that.
Main Street, that's what I'm saying. If you have it as entire length, it, that bottom is very confusing.
It's not gonna be, um.
Main Street to Lund Terrace.
Right, it's going to be. Main Street from.
Ninety to Lund, Lund Terrace.
Right. To the eastern side of Lund Terrace, the western side of Lund Terrace, or to the corner of Depot Square.
It, it's just Lund Terrace. If you include Depot Square, then you will prohibit anyone.
Okay, that goes like that, that goes like that. Forge Gate Drive.
I would remove entirely.
Is this a village street or not? Oh, sorry.
It's disputed.
So, so why are we?
It's at the entrance to Forge Gate Drive, correct, Fran?
Uh, no U-turns, U-turns prohibited on Forge Gate Drive, the entire length.
Uh, we, we can't say that.
You can't say that, no.
No.
Uh, and I don't think, I think we should take this out and just leave Lund Terrace.
I agree.
So, um, when you say it's disputed, is it actively being disputed or we just haven't dealt with the question?
We say it's ours, they say it's theirs.
And on it goes.
I talked to John about this and John says it's ours, whether they.
I think it's ours too.
And they've just, they maintain it or whatever, and I brought that up. If it was kind of like, you know, if you maintain it for X amount of years, now it's yours or something, and he said, no, this was a while ago, so. They, they claim it is theirs, but it's not from everything. I, and also Ken Carney. Believe, has done research on it for obvious reasons and he said that it's also, you know, it's public street.
He wants to be. Yeah, I think there was, there was a question when we talked a couple of times about possibly closing parts of Main Street. For a small amount of time to, to run traffic through there and that they cringe.
Well, I mean, it's not, it's not a suburb back there. It's part of a village. We all deal with traffic on our streets.
Marie, I don't know where this local law one, two seventeen. Marie, I don't know where this local law, 1217, what it was attached to, so I'm just gonna leave it there until we figure this out.
Okay, so, um, we're at 20 after 8:00. Do we want to go through through streets or call it a night?
I would love to call it a night, I am.
I would love to call it a night.
Okay.
Okay.
Mercy.
For me.
Well, hey, this is the most riveting two hours I've spent in a long time. Thank you so much.
I'm so excited.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you all.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, all.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. Again. Good night, Marie.
Good night, Fran.
Thank you very much.
And I'll take care of the, I'll take care of the tables, okay?
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. I know I should have done it ages ago.
No, 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 no.
Take it easy, we'll see you, I'm out of commission tomorrow, but I'll probably catch up to you over the weekend.
Okay, have a good one, Fran.
Thank you very much, take care.
Bye.
Good night.
Night.